Is everyone good now?
Higher than.
Ma'am.
Yes, you're all right.
And that's me.
I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to convene closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that the Williamsburg, I certify, is that the one I want?
That's the one you want.
Okay, I got it. I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Serza, would you please?
Dr. Beers is absent. Ms. Cook?
I am here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Moving on to item three point two, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Question? No objection?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to four point one, announcements and superintendent's report, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My report this evening begins with evidence of the incredible teaching and learning taking place in WJCC schools. First, I am proud to share that every one of our sixteen schools earned accreditation from the Virginia Department of Education. This is an incredible accomplishment in itself, but when you consider that this is the thirteenth consecutive year that all of our schools are accredited, it becomes even more noteworthy. Standards of learning data reflect substantial student achievement in reading, math, science, and history. In fact, WJCC schools outperformed the state in each of these key areas for the all-students category. You're going to see a presentation from our Department of School leadership in just a few minutes that will provide more detailed information. Accreditation is just one indicator of the remarkable academic achievement of WJCC students. Their performance on the Scholastic Aptitude Test is another. Just last week, the College Board released SAT performance data showing that the WJCC Schools class of two thousand nineteen outperformed its peers across Virginia and the nation. Our students earned an average mean score of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five, which is sixteen points higher than the state average, and seventy-six points higher than the average of all two thousand nineteen high school graduates nationwide. That means that, on average, WJC students achieved at a higher level than their peers who attend public, private, and parochial schools across the country. These academic accomplishments, both SAT performance and earning accreditation, are a direct result of our focused efforts by our students, their teachers, school administrators, and central office support teams. Furthermore, they reflect the work we are doing in support of Goal One of our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, which centers on academic achievement and college and career readiness. As a community, we have so many reasons to be proud of our students and staff, and I hope that all of our families, business leaders, and partners in education will join us in celebrating these incredible successes. Finally, this evening, I would like to announce a special visit by a VIP, a very important partner in public education. The First Lady of Virginia, Mrs. Pamela Northam, will visit Matthew Waley Elementary School next week to celebrate Virginia's Farm to Schools Month. Williamsburg James City County Schools was selected for this visit in large part because of the partnership between our schools, SHIP, and the Williamsburg Health Foundation. The First Lady's office noted that the WJCC and SHIP exemplify a holistic approach to nutritious nutrition education, wellness, and connecting school gardens to classrooms and cafeterias. During her visit, Mrs. Northam will spend time in Mattie's Garden, the outdoor learning space designed and maintained by students and master gardeners from the Williamsburg Garden Club. She will also speak with students about the importance of locally sourced food and lead them in a statewide activity called the Crunch Heard Round the Commonwealth. As part of the crunch, students will simultaneously take a bite out of a Virginia-grown apple to help raise awareness of farm-to-school programs. You will be able to see photographs from Mrs. Northam's visit to Matthew Waley next Monday on the school division's website and Facebook page. I'm sure I believe that's all of our announcements this evening.
Dr. Heron, are there additional announcements from members? Okay, now is an opportunity for citizens to provide comment. I don't believe we have any citizens signed up. Moving on to our proposed agenda items, six point one is a placeholder, Advisory Committee Appointments. Citizens from across the division have applied to our Career and Technical Education Committee, our students have applied to the Student Advisory Committee, and also the Special Education Advisory Committee. So the board will vote on that at the next meeting. Unless there are additional comments or questions, I'll move on to the next. Item six point two, award request for book nineteen dash writing intervention software.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Paul is going to present this item this evening about the writing intervention software.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. In two thousand seventeen, the Virginia Department of Education adopted new standards of learning for K-12 English Language Arts. In response to this, teachers, reading specialists, and the coordinator of secondary ELA spent many hours creating new curriculum frameworks and unit plans. Throughout this process, a need was identified for resources that support students' acquisition of writing skills. Request for proposal nineteen dash one four one two two was issued to provide a division-level writing intervention tool that supports writing in the secondary ELA classroom. Members of the RFP committee included reading specialists, teachers, and central office staff, who evaluated the proposals based on the following criteria: vendor qualifications, understanding of the statement of needs, functionality, proposed work plan, and the cost. Six vendors responded to the RFP, and of these, No Red Ink was determined to be the most responsive. This tool helps students improve writing skills via adaptive activities that guide learners through a continuous process of skill-building, feedback, and revision. No Red Ink delivers performance data to teachers and administrators that allows teachers to target students' specific needs and skill deficits, as well as prepare students for assessments such as the End of Course Writing SOL, PSAT, SAT ACT, and AP exams. Cost budgeted is over a hundred thousand over the course of six years, and I have with me Mrs. Sarah Brant, coordinator of secondary ELA, and she and I are here available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Cook?
Just wanted to ask a clarifying question about the budget. So the cost of over a thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand is budgeted in your cost center?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Young?
No, I was just thinking, so you mentioned No Red Ink.
Correct.
So can you be more specific about what that means?
Name of the company.
That's the name of the company.
Oh, okay. Thought maybe they might use green or some other color, but so I, and from what I'm gathering, then this is a program that did some pre-assessment, and then, so we have an idea of what the student is, is where the student's level is.
Correct. It does have a diagnostic that they take, like a pre-test, and then from that, it helps the teacher know where the students are. So it's very individual to the students. So it could be a whole group, but also it could be, for intervention, more small groups or, you know, tier-two students as well. So teachers are very familiar with it. They've used it in the past.
And from what grade level is this?
It's high school.
High school, thank you.
It's going to be for high school.
Does this replace any other existing program or software, or is it new?
If used in the past, but now it needed to be at the division level, because...
Previously, each individual school bought the program, and so because we were approaching that magic number, we did an RFP and decided to take it to the division level. We can support it, we can analyze the data here, and so centrally, we'll be able to kind of see how many students are on, how many teachers are using it, and what progress is being made.
So taking it, kind of centralizing it versus a distributed model?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So when you have the cost budgeted, is there a between number instead of just an over? Because there's a lot of numbers over a hundred thousand. Is there somewhere we can go over this and under that, say between?
So currently, this year, it's costing us twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars.
I understand that, but by the next meeting, when you had the motion, can we say, can we bound it a little bit more than over a hundred thousand?
Looking to...
We can provide the actual number.
Yeah, next time.
The next meeting.
Okay.
And I think it comes to you because it's over one hundred thousand over several years.
Over several years. So if we continue to renew this contract over the next several years, the total will be over one hundred thousand.
Okay, so we will have the actual number.
It was just worded oddly, I think, yeah.
Yeah, because this is, okay. I didn't know if it was a level of effort thing that was, it was going to be over a hundred thousand, or if there was a, but...
Over the next five years, we're anticipating spending over a hundred thousand dollars total.
And the process is quite new. We've been bringing a lot of child nutrition services, items, and other items that have been exactly the same, where we, below a hundred, we weren't bringing them before, and now we're going through the process of anything that's going to reach that board approval number, even over several years, becomes something that requires board approval.
Young?
And is this program for any number of ELL students, or is there a per-student licensing?
Of course, the entire division of high school.
Questions? We will vote on this at the next meeting, accurate number, exactly what it will call. Less or additional questions? Thank you.
This isn't me. What did I look at?
Moving on to item six point three, annual review of the school board's standard operating procedure. This is something that we do each year, and so I will toss it to Ms. Cook and Ms. Hummel, who...
I'm going to let Ms. Cook because she has more hours of sleep under her. And so I think this is actually the second time we've reviewed it this year, just because the some, because normally we do it at the front part of the year, but some, some items have come up that I think warranted some additional changes. So the first, on page one, two, and four, and fifteen are really housekeeping. If you look at page nineteen, we just added a few board recognitions to just recognize what is our current practice. We've extended, over the last couple of years, just our board recognitions to include, for instance, volunteer, volunteers of the year, and community recognitions, which is a really good thing, and it's good to acknowledge that in our SOP. And then in page twenty-one, just again, to reflect our practice, just clarified that the current chair and vice chair possess a purchasing card, just to add clarity there. And then, and then on page twenty-eight... Talked about a couple of different protocols that, this is kind of an added section. One is conference attendance, to just add clarity that if you attend a conference, courtesy of the school division, that it's, you know, that it's an expectation that you share what you learned with the rest of the board. In addition to, if you're unable to attend and no one's able to go in your place and the school division's not able to recapture those funds, that a refund to the division would be in order. And then moving on to ceremonies, we basically have two types of ceremonies that we participate in as board members. The first is where the focus is really on the students, and the second would be where this focus is on either the community or employees. So if I can start with the latter, so whether it's like, let's pretend we're doing a state of the school division, or the retirement ceremony, there, it would be appropriate for the chair of the board or board members to offer opening remarks, remarks of welcome, that sort of thing. And then, but in the ceremonies where the focus is the students, who the administrations have, the administration has charge of the students as opposed to the school board, we're recommending that school board members participate as attendees, but not, but not participate directly in the ceremony. So specifically where this pertains to us is at graduation and handing out diplomas directly. So it's the recommendation of the policy committee that that historical practice stop, and that we are seated on the stage per usual, but that elected and appointed officials don't hand out diplomas any longer.
This doesn't go to elected, to the supervisors, don't go to our SOP?
Right, so I think we would then ask Ms. Ombi to send...
So what's the driver for that? Because we've had, when we're giving out a diploma, we're focusing on the students.
Right, exactly. So the driver for that, for me, is that, that it creates a sense of otherness. There's three hundred kids in the audience, and it creates a sense of otherness for the few children that are offered that opportunity and privileges them over the other three hundred some odd kids. But it's also a logistical concern for the administration, and it's not, it's an unusual practice and not typical of other divisions, and it's unusual to WJCC. And so that's the source of the recommendation. I don't know if you want to add anything, Ms. Hummel?
I, I think both of those reasons are good drivers. I think it can get out of control, and I think it has gotten out of control. I think at the last, one of the last graduations, we had multiple different people giving out, giving out diplomas. And it should just be the principal of the school should give out the diploma, and there shouldn't be a, oh, wait a minute, you know, this city council person, this supervisor, this board member coming up on stage and then having a special situation where they're handing a diploma to someone. It then becomes, in effect, it could be perceived that it's like a photo op for the person who is giving the award, rather than treating all of the students the same, and having all the students receive their diploma from their principal.
I don't see the driver why we need to, I don't think there's a problem with us giving out diplomas, but that's, that's, that's just my personal opinion. I don't think it creates chaos, and when we talk about otherness, I mean, we have kids that have all kinds of ribbons, and we have kids that have no ribbons, so there's otherness there. I just, I just don't see the, I don't see the driver why it has to be in our SOP.
I don't think ribbons can...
Well, we're talking about otherness.
I'm not talking, I'm, when you're talking about otherness and then saying ribbons represent otherness, ribbons are something that, ribbons have been earned by the student. And so that's why they get to wear cords, their honor cords, or some special situation that they can, they can have because they earned something. This is not, the students haven't earned anything. They are asking for, or, you know, asking for a person other than their principal, and they're probably not even the ones asking. It's probably their parents asking for someone other than the principal to give out a diploma.
I could just speak to that, too. So I think in terms of trying to standardize things, I know even with the graduation cords, a couple of years ago, the three principals got together and did try to standardize even the cords, because there had been, you know, in past times, students could wear cords that weren't nationally recognized honor societies, and so we have tried to standardize that process, so students can't just wear any kind of cord, so that's standardized. And so I think really the driver behind this is just standardizing who, and so I think, rather than make a list of who could, it's probably just easier to say, no one but. And I know the division has had, you know, historically, teachers have been able to give their students their diplomas. Board members have historically given their children their diplomas, but I think in an attempt to standardize, it's just easier to say, division will.
Young, it looked like you had additional comments.
I mean, having been one of those persons during the last graduation that had the opportunity to pass out diplomas, and working with Jamestown High School, I felt like Jamestown High School, I don't, didn't feel like that it interfered with anything. I mean, they were ready, because the diploma had mine, the person's name they was presenting, and it seemed seamless to me, and so I, I'm not sure that I understand what is being said. I don't agree with it.
Well, I think it looks seamless because staff worked really hard to make it look seamless.
Well, I think they do.
But I think that it is adding an extra layer of things to do for staff on an already very difficult day. I mean, your staff are coordinating so many things, and so it, I think staff did a really good job of honoring folks' requests, but it does add another logistical level.
Taylor, do you have thoughts?
I think I can see how it'd be so special to have, you know, someone other than your principal give you your diploma, but I do see also the merit in, you know, standardizing it for everyone, because as you said, it's already a very busy day. So it would make it a little streamlined if we standardized it in that way.
I just don't see the driver of why we need, why, why the, everything has to be standard. I mean, not everybody has, you know, the fife and drum at their graduations either, so I just don't see what's anything's wrong with us being unique, and if a board member wants to hand a kid a diploma, it's, I think that's, that should be fine and acceptable, but if the will of the board is not that, fine, but I just don't see, I don't see what the, I don't see what the big issue is that that's a problem.
And I don't know, when did it become a big issue? Because for the three years that I've been on the board during graduation, it's been standard procedure, so I don't understand what, when it became an issue. I mean, was it, who brought up the issue? Was it staff that brought up the issue? Is it, I mean, I'm trying to understand. I'm not trying to be obnoxious, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, yes, staff, staff did recommend that it had gotten a little out of control at graduation ceremonies this year. There were, it was a disruption, you know, you've got a flow, you've got a lot, and our high schools are getting bigger and bigger, there's, graduations are getting, there's more and more people graduating, so you've got people coming across the stage, and then you've got this, oh, wait a minute, on this particular person, this dignitary's going to give this award, and then five students later, this dignitary's going to jump up and give an award, and then, oh, wait a minute, this person is going to be given the award by person number four.
So how many, how many people gave out, gave out diplomas that weren't principals this year? If it's a problem, we should know the number, right? So what's, if it's out of control this year, what, what was in control previous?
I don't know, that the question should be, how many people gave out diplomas, but maybe how many students got diplomas from?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's probably a better...
That's, that's whatever.
That's probably a better question.
Better.
And I don't, is that answerable?
Today?
Is that answerable?
I mean, if it's a problem, we should know what the problem is.
It's not something we've kept count of. We've just honored the tradition, discussion amongst senior staff each year is that, it is, it's not, it's not the norm, obviously. The principal is the one who usually gives the student a diploma for their work and being successful in school.
And I don't, in my experience as a board member, is that this is not, it's not all of the sudden. I mean, for as long as I've been on the board, it's been something that has been remarked to me, is something that's not easy to do. And, you know, frankly, the timing, I'm, you know, I'm, my kid's a junior and sophomore, and so I, I don't take this lightly, but I do think that I am sensitive to the three hundred kids out in the audience, and that if, to your point about a sense of otherness, if kids, I don't want, I don't think it's appropriate for the board to, to, to add to any sense of otherness. If there's a sense of otherness that exists because of cords, or because of sports, or because of speaker-ing, or valedictorian, or whatever, but if we are contributing to a sense of otherness, you know, I think that that impacts the experience that the students and their families have, and I, I don't, I don't...
So few perks to this job, that being able to give your kid a diploma doesn't seem to be too hard of one to have, but I'm done, so...
It's a perk I'm willing to forego.
I'm done, so, but it's not, doesn't, doesn't affect me, but it affects board members that come behind me, and I just, I just don't see what a problem is.
And I think it's gotten beyond that, though, Jim. That's the thing. It hasn't been a board member giving a diploma to their child.
Sure, right.
I think it's gotten, it's neighbors' kids, or, you know, friends' kids, or whatever, and it's just, it's, and I don't know whether you make an exception for a child. I can see, I mean, I, I agree, there are very few perks to this position, and I can see that it would be nice to be able to get, and my, my kids are done, so I have no, no, you know, agenda for my own self in this. I'm just saying that what has maybe in the past been a board member, or a city council person, or a supervisor giving a diploma out to their own child, has evolved into a board member, a city council, or whatever, giving diplomas out to special friends, or whatever, kids, neighbors, whatever, and that, that is when it becomes, I think, a distraction.
Well, it hasn't evolved. I mean, in my nine years on this board, we've always done it every year, and it's not necessarily just your own kid, but a kid that you have a special relationship with, and it's different if you give it to the whole graduating class, but, you know, give it to two, I don't think is a problem, but...
I, I do. I'm just saying, I do.
I hear that you do, but you hear that I don't, and so, so, but if I'm in the minority, I get it. I mean, it's fine. I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm done, but it's just, I just don't, I just don't know what problem we are solving, because graduations go fine. If you, if, if, if in the Gatling gun of somebody riding out, reading out names, they got to slow down, for one, that's fine. I don't see where that is a problem, so...
As someone who, on the university side, is very involved with commencement planning and diploma ceremony planning, I, I would find it, it's just one of those, you've got so many things you're trying to control, and you're trying to control everything down, literally down to the second, so you're not getting timing out of control. As far as just timing, how long it takes someone to physically walk across the stage, I mean, you really get quite detailed when you're planning diploma ceremonies, and although you might think it's not that big of a deal to have, you know, five or six or more kids have a special situation where someone else jumps up other than the principal and gives a diploma, I think it is. I think it is a distraction.
I hear you.
Dr. Beers isn't here, but a straw poll. It sounds like Mr. Kelly is opposed, Ms. Young?
Opposed.
And Ms. Young is opposed. I'm for it, and I've got two more kids coming through, and I, I gave my daughter her diploma this year. Ms. Taylor?
I could go either way on it.
So, and Dr. Beers is not here, so this is something we plan to vote on at the next meeting.
Always put it on both discussion and...
Well, you can have a discussion with Dr. Beers and figure out where he is, and then go from there.
And in the meeting that I had with him and Dr. Heron, he, he felt strongly about the principal being the one to hand out all diplomas. I don't know if, Dr. Heron, am I remembering that correctly?
Honestly, I don't recall the actual, what he said in the conversation. I remember talking about it before graduation last year, but I can't remember what each, where each individual member was.
Yeah, he and I came at it from different angles. Yeah, he and I came at it from different angles. But he, um, said specifically, he felt that the only person who should be handing out diplomas is the principal, because that's the appropriate. So he came at it from a sort of governance administration angle as opposed to perspective.
So we could put it on the agenda to discuss it and then vote on it.
Well, that's what you do anyway, isn't it? Put it on the agenda to discuss it, and then you vote on it.
Well, you would, but your motion would be different.
Yeah.
It could be as, as shown or as revised. So I would just have the chair talk to Dr. Beers and then put it on the agenda the way, the way that goes. But as, we just understand it's not a full majority of the board that agrees with it.
Any additional comments?
Are you done, Mrs. Cook? I haven't gone to contacting attorney. I haven't gone through the entire changes to your document. And talk about contacting.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I overlooked that. I thought you were asking if I had contacted an attorney about that. Yeah. So, uh,
It's not that big of a deal.
No, I did not. So, yeah. So, um, yeah, just to add some, um, again, some normalization about contacting the attorney, just some processes in place if, and a board member what needs to contact attorney to be in communication with the clerk and the chair, mostly for billing and communication purposes. And then thirty, page 37 is the, um, just housekeeping. Reflect our practice, which is, we've reviewed this a couple of times a year for the last couple of years.
Can we just do annually?
That is a fine question. The policy committee just gives what it takes on what it's given.
Over $100,000 at least annually?
Sometimes it's nice to have flexibility.
As annually, but.
As, as, as needs arise.
It is not now.
I'd like annually. Straw poll that?
Huh?
Straw poll that. Whether, straw poll that, whether we want to do it annually or at least annually?
Two people said.
Calendar process.
Are you ready to move on? Okay, we're gonna move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are actually beginning to discuss the calendar development a little earlier this year because of the changes in the so-called King's Dominion law. And Ms. Cox is going to take us through some information and talk about our process this year. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. As Dr. Heron mentioned, we are here before you a little bit earlier. Um,
I printed mine out at work.
Special.
I'm sorry, I didn't provide them at your seat.
Good.
We'll live.
Sorry, it took me a second to realize your question. No, we did not print copies at your seat. They were uploaded in the packet.
I didn't want to, yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, so tonight, we're here to talk about the calendar development process. Uh, as you will recall, uh, each year, the school, the school administration brings together a calendar committee that includes teachers, support staff administrators, representatives from parent and employee groups, and then the business community as well. Just as a reminder of this year, the current year calendar, 180 instructional days, some designated half days for staff professional development within the academic calendar, early release days also for parent teacher conferences, staff workdays, and exams. This year, the first day of school was September 3rd, the first Tuesday after Labor Day. You'll recall when we discussed this calendar, um, in the winter, that one of the things we talked about was that the General Assembly had a couple of bills, uh, before them, which could change the, uh, required start date for school divisions. And in fact, um, the General Assembly decided in February of 2019 to eliminate the so-called King's Dominion law that for 30-plus years required school divisions to open the day, the Tuesday after Labor Day unless they qualified for a special waiver based on inclement weather, or special academic programs such as year-round schools. So with the end of the King's Dominion law, school divisions now have flexibility for a pre-Labor Day start, provided that students do not begin school more than 14 days before Labor Day, and that schools are closed the Friday immediately preceding Labor Day through the holiday. Currently, there are 87 school divisions across the Commonwealth that open before Labor Day. Um, many of them, uh, are holdovers from waivers, and they just continued to, uh, open before Labor Day with the change of the King's Dominion law.
Eighty-seven of?
One hundred and thirty-two. Thought you were gonna trick me, didn't you?
No, I knew the answer to that question. I was gonna make sure that the public knew the answer to that question. That it's, it's the overwhelming majority of school divisions that are
Correct.
currently open before Labor Day.
And since Mr. Kelly objected, so the, the 45-ish that, that continue to start after Labor Day, or is it primarily Hampton Roads?
Um, it is Hampton Roads. Um, there are the Richmond area, um, and then, of course, the area between York County, um, York, Gloucester, Charles City, Pecosin, basically our region's schools. So what are some of the benefits, potential benefits to an earlier start? Increased instructional time before SOLs and AP tests, alignment with community college calendars for students taking part in dual enrollment courses, the potential to end the first semester prior to winter break, the possibility of ending the school year early, and the ability to shift a few of the professional development days from in-service week in August to later in the calendar. Of course, there are other factors that we would need to consider. First and foremost, shared regional programs. Um, as we were just noting, the school divisions in our immediate neighboring counties and cities have, uh, shared programs through, most of them housed at New Horizons. But that includes like the Governor's School, CTE programs, the Center for Autism. There's some other special education programs that are also shared. And so it's important for us to, um, consider what those regional calendars will look like for the shared programs. We would also have to look at summer operations and how a change might chain, might impact some of those. Um, the first year is primarily where we would see that. Uh, the good news is that if we were to move to a pre-Labor Day start for the coming school year, um, Labor Day is actually September 7th. So the first day of school would be the 8th anyway. So we have a little bit of time. It's not like you're starting the second week of August necessarily, because it's a late start next year because of Labor Day. And of course, families, um, will want us to consider, uh, staff and family commitments, uh, and what their plans might already be in place for the summer. So we wanted to find out, what do our stakeholders think? We're currently gathering input through a parent, staff, and community survey that, uh, opened last week. The survey will close Sunday, October 6th. Currently, or as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, there were 2,984 responses to the survey. Um, to break that down, 2,209 of the respondents identified themselves as a parent or guardian. 596 said they were staff members. 62 were community members. And 117 of the respondents identified themselves as students. So, um, we have a good cross-section of, of folks taking part in our survey. We will share the results of that survey and a summary and the comments with you, uh, once the survey closes and we move forward. That will also be shared with the calendar committee, um, and the superintendents, both the local calendar committees and the regional calendar committee that meets, uh, several times a year. Um, the, everyone has their calendar, or their survey up now, and they will all be ending by October 6th. A couple of the school divisions started theirs a day or two later. That was just a logistical item, not because their survey is significantly different than the one that we have posted online. So, uh, you see on the, the screen there, the other ways that we plan to gather input through teacher forum, the support employee forum, business, the superintendent's business and community advisory committee, the employee association, and again, through that, um, calendar committee that has representatives of various stakeholder groups. So what's next, once the survey closes and once we gather this input, the regional calendar committee will meet for the first time on Friday. Um, and I'm currently the representative on that, uh, committee. So I'll be sharing our survey, um, results to date with the calendar committee, and then bringing back any requests that we have for some, um, regional dates as far as professional development or staff days. Um, the online survey will close on the 6th. On the 14th, we're bringing together the school division calendar committee and hope to have some sort of, um, at least start on a working draft after that meeting. Uh, the regional calendar committee meets again in November. And then our hope is to bring information to you on November 12th, which may or may not include a formal recommendation. It may be the overview of the survey results and a status update on our neighboring divisions. But, um, as you can see, our goal is to bring this to you early, knowing that parents and families and staff members would want to know one way or the other, whether there would be or would not be a change to a start date, to give families time to plan if necessary, or to reassure them that the calendar will stay the same. Yes, ma'am.
I had a couple of questions about the regional calendar, uh, committee. Are the other school districts within our region pretty much going through the same process we are in, in doing the surveying and the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So all of the, um, the regional, uh, school divisions are taking part in the survey, have the survey open now. The superintendents are discussing as part of their regular meetings. Uh, and then we've also identified common stakeholder groups within the school division and the community that everyone's reaching out to.
And does the regional calendar committee kind of trump the, any other concerns? I mean, any other, meaning, like, if, if the regional calendar committee decides they want to go in a particular direction, even if maybe community members might, our own Williamsburg community members may want to go in another direction, does the region trump? I would, I-
Right. So each, each of the, um, opportunities for input, that's, that's one data point. That's one piece of, of the puzzle. Um, but ultimately, when you're thinking about the services that we're able to provide to students through regional cooperation, that we may not be able to provide as individual school divisions, certainly that's something that we all want to, um, to give high priority and consideration of. Um, so the, alignment with a regional calendar and with the other school divisions is very important.
If I could add, the voice, our voice is on that committee as part of the regional calendar committee. So if our community gives us lots of feedback that it's against a change, then that will be how we'll be giving our voice within that regional committee. Um, but the majority of divisions will make the decision and go a certain way.
I just wanted to kind of clarify for, for whoever might be listening, that that's the situation.
Yes, ma'am. And traditionally, New Horizons Regional Education Center follows, uh, very closely the, uh, calendar in Newport News as far as closures, delays, uh, staff days and such.
Ms. Cook?
Um, thank you, Ms. Cox. Um, I, I presume your list on, your slide listing the stakeholders was, those were just examples, and that there are others?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to confirm that the PTAs and the PTA councils were on your list.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and then also, I just wanted to share that, um, if you look at the potential benefits of an early start, um, one of the, the feedback that I've gotten overwhelmingly from, um, the community is that, um, and I know this isn't the intent, but that, but that it seems like it's a foregone conclusion, because it's about, um, the potential benefits of an early start. So there's, so I think we could benefit a little bit more from pro con, you know, and letting, assuring everyone that we are thinking about the cons as well as the pros. Um, and, and I have assured everybody that we are thinking about the cons. And I, and I do want to, um, but I think the sense is that it's a foregone conclusion, just because of the, the language.
Right.
Particularly in response to the survey. Um, and then, just really, I want to echo what Ms. Hummel said, that, um, you know, that I think we do need to, if, depending on what the results of the surveys are across the community and what the regional group decides to do, I think we need to be really very transparent about what our options are in the event that there's a disconnect between what the regional group decides to do and what our community wants. And so I think, um, we just need to be really clear and transparent about that.
Young?
I, I agree with, uh, Ms. Cook. As I've talked to people, the, the feeling was is they were wondering why we were asking, since they thought it'd already been decided. But I've, what I've told them is that this is an ongoing process, and, and a lot of what will happen will be determined by the region.
And so I, I will just say that the intent of the survey, which was developed with representatives from the regional school divisions, um, was to ensure that people could tell us what was important to them for us to consider as we made a decision, rather than it be a vote yes, no, where it's a majority rule. Because, um, you know, really, we need to know, what are the factors that you want us to really dig through, uh, deep down, rather than a simple up-down, yes, no?
Um, I would just like to echo again what Ms. Cook said with regard to, um, the list. Would hope that we also reach out to our own advisory committees, in addition to PTA's and PTAs. Um, I, I too have heard a lot of feedback, overwhelmingly, folks want to make sure that they have a lot of time as to whatever. And then, um, just want to echo that if we are able, if we do start earlier, that there would, there would be flexibility. And so I think there is some sense, um, from folks that reached out to me, if we were to start school earlier, that, that would just be less summer, um, not recognizing that we might have a longer winter break, or a longer spring break, or a longer Thanksgiving break, or we might get out earlier. So I think just letting the public know that it would give flexibility. It's not just less summer. It would be different days off. Um, but then if I could just echo one, one benefit of aligning with a community college, as our division continues to really push, um, dual enrollment and early college. Right now, we're asking our students, our seniors, to complete all of their core classes one month earlier than they would normally do that. Because our semester ends the end of January, and those students who were going to Thomas Nelson the second semester of their senior year have to have all their coursework done before Christmas break, because they start at Thomas Nelson the first week of January. So say that, as we're moving more and more towards early college and current technical education, that's something that folks might want to be mindful of, aligning those, those regional calendars.
Just a general question about the, is it the SAT tests, or the, the, uh, in May, right? Are they?
AP tests.
AP tests.
Advanced placement.
The AP tests are in May. Is that right? When are they?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I, I seem to recall that that would be another potential benefit, because what I had heard is that a lot of times the AP tests are coming before our students have completed
I sense.
the curriculum. So, um, our students were always at a disadvantage in taking AP tests. That's what I remember. I could, okay. So that would be another thing that I don't see on here as a potential benefit, uh, an early start.
Some of our students finish their AP classes in January, around the block.
Right. But it's that May, I think it was, I'm just going from my memory of my own kids taking tests. I remember that, that was a complaint.
Yeah, if you take, if you have a spring, a spring AP class, you missed, you don't have a month and a half of
Right. So you're like, trying to-
Yeah. One of the things it does do too is that, if you had to do 180 instructional days, if you start on September 2nd or start on September 8th, September 8th puts a lot of pressure on 180 to get it done before graduation. Uh, then you add hurricanes and snowstorms, and it puts additional pressure.
Any additional comments or questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
On that. Okay, moving on to item 7.2, uh, the WJCC's 2019-2020 Equity Series. So this is school accreditation and academic progress.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring you our accreditation outcomes and SOL results. Um, this is our first of our equity series for this year. And Mr. Walker is going to lead off this evening. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Dr. Worley, Dr. Kelly, and I are excited to present an overview update on WJCC schools' SOL performance under Virginia's new accreditation system and academic progress of our schools. Data and information shared this evening are based on the outcomes from the 2018-2019 testing year. We've provided you a folder filled with lots of specific data and information on our schools, comparisons to similar school divisions and surrounding school divisions. The contents inside the folder are also uploaded to board docs. Additionally, we will share some of our steps to support students and schools. As we review student performance, it is important to recall the state's efforts to make the SOL test more rigorous, as well as last year's revisions to school accountability standards, and the introduction of the new mathematics test at all grade levels. As quoted by the current Virginia State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. As quoted by the current Virginia State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. James Lane, "The achievement in a school, a division, and in the Commonwealth as a whole must be viewed in the context of these significant changes and performance on last year's SOL tests." So with that reminder, let's begin. Let's take a moment to visually acclimate to the information on the screen that you can see. WJCC is denoted as the Division in dark blue on the left compared to the state performance denoted in orange. On the next several slides, you will see the overall school division data for all students' SOL performance. As a division, WJCC Schools has consistently performed above the state average for the last three years, 83, 82, and 81 percent. Although we see a very minimal decrease in scores over time, you will notice the state results also mirror this trend. Identical to the results for the reading performance, our school division continues outperforming the state for the last three years in writing, coming in at 82, 83, and 80 percent. The writing SOL test is given in grade eight and end, of course, grade 10 for high school. So as a quick recap, our division continues to exceed the state performance in reading. Please recall that for state accreditation purposes, reading and writing scores are combined for an overall school score in reading. And we'd like to note the increase of our English language learners' performance of 5 percent from the previous year. Mathematics. Our school division has consistently performed again above the state average for three consecutive years, 82, 79, and 86 percent. Note the significant increase this past year from 79 to 86. Again, WJCC outperforms the state, and we also saw considerable increase, 10 percent, with four of our reporting groups, black, poverty, students with disabilities, and English language learners. Science. Our school division has consistently performed above the state average again for three consecutive years, 85, 85, and 84 percent. We're very proud of the consistent growth made by our students with disabilities over the last three years in science. WJCC has consistently performed above the state average again for three consecutive years in history, coming in at 87, 84, and 84 percent. Please recall, though, that SOL performance in history is no longer part of the state accreditation system. However, history is still required to be assessed. Let's move on to our like-division comparison. WJCC is continuing to benchmark performance with school divisions of similar student enrollment size, similar number of schools, similar operating budgets, and similar demographics such as percentage of students with disabilities, percentage of English language learners, and percentage of poverty level. Those similar school divisions are Augusta, Bedford, Fauquere, Frederick, and Rockingham, basically on the western side of the state along Interstate 81. So you can see on the screen with our like-divisions that overall English reading performance for all students, notice WJCC is outperforming our similar school divisions, coming in at the number one spot in reading. Next, again, we'll see WJCC outperforming our similar school divisions in mathematics, coming in at the number one spot. Later, when you have a little more time to closely read the multicolor data sheets comparing WJCC to our similar divisions, I'd like to point out and have you note that our students with disabilities' performance, our students with disabilities outperformed our similar divisions on all SOL tests, reading, math, history, science, writing. Additionally, WJCC has the highest percentage of students with disabilities. That is no small feat. That is, congratulations to our students, teachers, and support staff in that area. You've just seen a brief overview of our division SOL data. We will now take a deeper look and review how the Virginia Department of Education, the VDOE, determines accreditation within this new system. As a reminder, we are just in the second year of the new state accreditation system. Therefore, we thought it would be beneficial to review the criteria and the information the state analyzes when determining accreditation. This overview will show how the VDOE is reporting each school's performance on the Virginia School Quality Profiles. Accreditation now encompasses SOL scores, graduation rates, efforts to reduce achievement gaps, and addressing chronic absenteeism. Dr. Kelly will now provide a brief overview of the VDOE's new accreditation system.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. This time we'll go into the accreditation indicators. Student achievement now includes additional success criteria, recognizing student achievement, student growth and progress. English and math now utilizes three success criteria to calculate the combined rate of English and math. The first success criteria is passing the test for science, the pass rate for calculated in the area of English and math, but there's no additional criteria considered. Grades four through eight in reading and math, there is a second success criteria of growth, and students who do not pass reading and math tests but show growth based on their progress tables will show as a pass. So there is no SOL student's growth applied for high school. Additionally, the students identified as English learners who do not pass the reading test but do show growth on the reading, do not show growth in reading, but gains in the annual English learner assessment are also counted as successful. As you recall, accreditation includes additional indicators that determine accreditation status for a school. Using the same combined rate of calculations we've just reviewed, the data is disaggregated by reporting subgroups for combined reading and writing and mathematics. The expectation is that the reporting subgroups will meet the same benchmark as the overall all students, 75 for combined reading and 70 percent for math. Chronic absenteeism is now calculated for each school. A student is defined as chronically absent if the student misses 10 percent of more of the school year. That means 18 days or 10 percent of a 180-day year. High schools must have a graduation and completion index of 88 percent or higher. The expectation is that high schools will also have a dropout rate of 6 percent or lower. And finally, the College and Career Readiness Index was added as an indicator. The definition for students meeting college and career readiness is an index is that the student has received credit for advanced coursework, earned a CTE credential, has participated in work-based learning experience, and this piece will come into play starting 2021 and 2022. All of these data points go into the School Quality Profiles, which provides information about student achievement, college career readiness, and program completion. The report cards are available for each of the schools and school divisions and for the Commonwealth. WJC Schools also has this link on our website. At this time, I'm going to go over the quality profiles and just show you some of the features that are there. The School Quality Profiles are a way to look at the performance of schools and school divisions. And these profiles are interactive and provide a wealth of information. Now, the first screen that you see is a snapshot of a school division. And the interest of learning more about the school division, a person can just hover over and scroll to different areas, such as accreditation, assessment, enrollment, college career readiness, even teacher quality. If we were to go to the assessment part, it gives you an interactive graph that you'll get to see the performance, just like Mr. Walker had shown. As we go down to mathematics, which is where our strongest performance has been, you'll not only see that our performance has grown over time, but as you go to the subgroup, a person can find out, such as economically disadvantaged, the significant growth that we made, well over 10 to 12 percent gain from the, from the three years. These interactive graphs are very, very helpful and allows a user to dig in not only for the overall performance of a school division, but to also learn more about the accreditation of schools. So I'll go back to our presentation, finish up with some of the highlights from the system. School quality indicators provide information on an overall student achievement and the achievement gaps. This is part of the packet that you see for the school dashboard section of, of the information we've provided you. The system presents information in the school performance just like the dash, of a dashboard, and it's just like the dashboard of your car. So if you see an indicator light come on, you know it's something that you'll need to address because you know that you have a top, you want to have your vehicle in top running condition, and it's actually a very good vehicle, and you want to keep, keep that quality vehicle up to, up to par. The School Quality Profile shows performance on each school quality indicators. And for us, it helps school divisions, as well as the schools, plan continuous improvement for each of the schools based on the quality indicators. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Mr. Walker so he can continue to talk about our performance.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Let's take a look at our nine elementary schools on the screen. For example, we have almost fully closed all achievement gaps in mathematics at our nine elementary schools. The goal is to bring all of our schools to green in all areas. Observe Stonehouse Elementary at the very bottom of the list. That school has earned Level 1 Performance Green for all students in English reading, mathematics, science, chronic absenteeism, and zero achievement gaps in math. However, the school has one area in Level 2 Yellow, an achievement gap in English reading, which will be a focused effort this year at Stonehouse. So just remember that analogy about the car dashboard with that, they had a little light that flickered on. At our middle schools, we have the same opportunity to close the achievement gap in English reading and have almost closed the achievement gap completely in mathematics. We attribute our progress in math to specific interventions you will hear highlighted later in the presentation. At our high schools, we've done exemplary work in closing the achievement gaps, an excellent graduation completion index and lowering the dropout rate. We're extremely proud of our high school's performance. So just yesterday, and as Dr. Heron mentioned earlier, the VDOE released the final state accreditation results. And we are proud to say that for the 13th consecutive year, WJCC School Division is fully accredited. We're extremely grateful for the dedication of our staff, teachers, and leaders, along with the collaborative efforts of all stakeholders to ensure continued overall success for our students. Partnership with families and community members paired with the focus of our teachers, leaders, and most importantly, our students, are the reason we continue to elevate beyond excellence. And now, Dr. Worley will highlight our story and some of the work behind the success of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Good evening. So you may be thinking, how did we do all of this? One contributing factor to the success of our district is the implementation of clear and comprehensive strategic plan. Our plan guides teaching and learning, administration, and operations in WJCC schools. Highly focused through our goals, the plan reflects the school division's priorities for education and the community's aspirations for students, who are, after all, the heart of our work. So tonight, we're highlighting Goal 1, which directly links to student academic outcomes, SOL performance, and ultimately, our school accreditation. Our strategies, initiatives, and key performance indicators support our efforts to transform teaching and learning and to prepare students for success in post-secondary education and careers. Two key strategies supporting Goal 1 this year were to fully integrate formative assessment to inform instruction, including small group learning, and to use growth assessment to measure student progress and accommodate student goal-setting and differentiated instruction. There are a few key initiatives at the heart of our Goal 1 work. One is our focus on collaborative teacher teams, or CTT teams. Through CTT, our teachers work in collaborative teacher teams to analyze data from Common Math pre- and post-unit assessments. This allows teachers to plan effective first-time instruction and to support the needs of all of our learners. The second key initiative is the ongoing expansion of Common Math pre- and post-unit assessments, K-12. Currently, the elementary math curriculum has 100 percent Common Math pre- and post-unit assessments. All grades six, seven, and eighth math, as well as Algebra I, have completed pre- and post-unit assessments. The team is currently working on finalizing Algebra II geometry, as well as some upper level math subjects for high school students. Currently, we use MAPS as a growth assessment. This resource allows teachers to facilitate the opportunity for students to set their own learning goals in math. And finally, we have small group learning, which is another key initiative that is a natural outgrowth of collaborative teacher teams. The data gathered from Common Assessments supports flexible grouping based on students' needs and/or enrichment. Additionally, the implementation of our Secondary Math Coach as a resource for teachers provides direct and intentional support for schools and for teachers in their classrooms. The Math Coach creates and models best instructional practices, such as small group instruction and effective technology integration. The Math Coach also creates resources for teachers, supports collaborative planning and the CTT process, models the practice of using data to drive instruction, works closely with our coordinators in curriculum and instruction to provide purposeful professional development for our teachers, among many other things that she does to collaborate. Next, we will look at literacy. During this school year, schools are working strategically to replicate successes seen with, within our mathematics classes. We're going to use multiple data points, and school teams are planning collaboratively, using more Common Assessments and learning from and with each other. Teachers' efforts are supported by our reading specialists and dedicated coordinators in the Department of Curriculum Instruction. Tonight, we've shared a lot of information with you. We've talked about numbers, benchmarks, and indicators. But this is the true indicator of our success, the faces of our students when they are engaged in their own learning. Our focus isn't on targets and colors on a dashboard, it's about our students. They are the reason for our work, and they are the reason we continue striving to elevate beyond excellence. Thank you, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Ms. Ome. Just, I don't, I, I need to study this and, and internalize it, so I'm sure I'll have more questions. But just at some point, I would appreciate a tutorial or just more information on understanding both student growth and achievement gaps and how they're assessed at the state level because I don't, I don't get that, and I just would like to better understand how we're being, you know, assessed as a division based on those two factors.
We can certainly provide that.
That would be very helpful. Kelly?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. To Mrs. Cook's point, when we say the words close the achievement gap, those are big words, and I just don't see that in the data that I'm seeing here where, so I'd like, like to understand how I can, there's one thing to say we, I guess, that we close the achievement gap to an acceptable level to meet the state requirements. There's another, another thing to say we close the achievement gap. And, and I don't think we've reached the second yet. Because looking at the, what we've done in past years to all, I just don't see that.
I've got something that I might be able to contribute to.
I'd love for you to.
The redesign of the accreditation system that the state has, has they designed it? When they redesigned the accreditation model itself, they wanted to create a fair, a system that will allow the schools to get credit for not only passing the SOL test, but making progress with certain students. And that's why they incorporated the growth process with the calculations into that. So when you look at the data points, if you go to the dashboard, you will see over time with the schools, and, and they'll have bar charts showing growth over time, showing the trends going up, where the raw data itself doesn't really articulate that growth and that progress. going up, where the raw data itself doesn't really articulate that growth and that progress that we make with students, the hard work that our staff make with ensuring that our English learners not only gain the curriculum, but also acquire English, which is also in addition to the things they need to have. So as the state kind of really looked to redesign the accreditation system, they looked to kind of look comprehensively at what the public was looking at as what makes a successful school. And so you're right, as part of this is the understanding of the accreditation system. Internally, we're doing additional training on understanding the accreditation, and our focus is about the dashboard and that laser-like focus to kind of help improve schools and schools' performance.
Right, and, you know, as we look at the data, I don't think our goal is to be above the state average. Our goal is to meet the needs of every child. And so while we, while we should say, hey, 13 years in a row, we're 100% accredited, we should throw a lot of, a lot of confetti at that, and I think that's great, but we should, we can also turn these numbers around and say that round numbers, 20% of our kids are not passing the SOL. And I don't know, as we sit around this table and as educators and as staff members can find that to be acceptable. And so we need to work on making, getting those numbers towards 100 and actually truly closing achievement gaps.
Yeah, and I think that's part of what we're looking at as well. As we were looking at what works with certain subgroups that were doing extremely well with mathematics, we're seeing some of the strategies that we put in place to really make a difference for the reporting groups that we struggle with the most, and this year's focus is actually really kind of taking that focus and that success that we had with the progress that we made, and it's not going to.
Sure.
We're not walking away from the progress we made with mathematics because that trend is going to continue, but to kind of use those same effective strategies to enhance teachers' capacity, to do that same thing in our language of arts performance as well.
Right.
It's not that the gap doesn't still exist, it's the fact in mathematics, we moved up by 10 points, which was more than, a lot of systems moved up a little bit in math because of a new test, but we actually moved up beyond that again.
Right.
Because of very specific strategies.
Right.
But yes, there's obviously always still work to do.
There's always, there's always still work to do, and then, and, you know, we use the data to determine where we go to next and what we, what we put our focus on, and that's, that's, I think, the important message to send.
I think that's why the state put the indicators and changed it where this is the first two years that, that we are actually measuring the subgroup data as part of our accreditation performance.
Sure.
So we've taken elements out of a federal accountability that we felt was very unfair, and then that has now been incorporated, the elements that really made success for our schools, into the accreditation system.
Right.
So, yeah, you're right, part of this is that this is something that allows us to kind of look to see where we need to work and easily identify where those progress areas are.
Right, and that's, that's just, I think, the message that we need to make sure that we're, that we're sending, yeah, we're celebrating the work, good work of our students and our staff and our administrators, and that's great, but there is work to be done, and this type of data allows us to figure out where we're going next.
If I could just add a comment to that, to take it down to the classroom level and our collaborative teacher teams, we're literally looking where every student is starting and where they end up at the end of the year, and our focus is on growth.
Right.
So some students may never hit an artificial target set somewhere up here.
Sure.
But if they start here and then we move them, the teacher's work moves them up that ladder of success, then we feel we've been successful with our students.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, and that's exactly what I'd like to know more about. I'd like to understand how you're demonstrating that to yourselves or to the families, to the students, or to the state, but I'd just like to understand a little bit more about that growth piece so that we can articulate that.
I could just add a couple comments, and then I'll ask the rest of the board. So I can, to add to what Mr. Kelly said and Ms. Cook, I can appreciate the fact that we can now incorporate and measure students' growth, but I, I think as a division, we should caution ourselves, I think we can definitely celebrate particularly growth in some subgroups, like students with disabilities and our ALL subgroups, but, but if you look at the raw data, even though we've outpaced the state, those subgroups are still 30 and 40 points below. And so I, I think we need to knowledge that publicly, and sometimes it seems like we're glossing over that when we say we're outpacing the state because that number is so low, that's really not something to celebrate. Additional?
Well, just, I mean, caution against saying that, I mean, by the state standard, we may have closed an achievement gap, but I'm not sure to Mr. Kelly's point that I would say that because.
Evan.
Additional thoughts? It's very low.
Right, yeah, because.
Ms. Young or Ms. Taylor, Ms.?
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm thinking, I'm going to need some time to digest this, but, I mean, when you're looking at EL data, or for us, I mean, I, I wonder if it's because of the number of students reading at such a low, coming in with such low English skills, and, I mean, I'd like to know exactly what factors are impacting some of these scores because, you know, we're doing well in some areas, but other areas where it seems like we aren't quite where we need to be, and I'm specifically looking at the subgroup chart front of that, that lists all of our nearby, our neighbors, because I think that's more what we're, what people in our community compare us to than, rather than Fakir County, which, I mean, I don't think too many people ever asked me, how did we compare with Fakir County? I don't think I've ever had anyone ask me that, but I have been asked, how do we compare with York County? How do we compare with Newport News? So I'm far more curious about those scores and the things that are impacting us not being maybe where we want to be. So.
On that subgroup, TS means too small, so when you're looking at, for example, Pecosin under writing, and it's too, too small, does that mean there's just like no Asians, no blacks, no Englishish language? Okay.
Yeah, there's, it's not going to be reported because there are too few students to report to legally report that.
But then, yeah, but then, but then they do show up in reading, is that just because they were, they had more than 10 students and, like, why is it TS for writing? Like, Pecosin has three TS for, but not.
Part of that may be an alternate assessment that was put in place that can't be measured as part of the indicator for the state. There may be a variety of reasons that we can look into it. Pecosin's is a unique example that doesn't have large subgroups that represent, and is not a good representative comparison to W James City, W. James City County.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with Pecosin, but I also agree that with, with Mrs. Young that I most often hear, how are we doing with York?
Yeah.
I mean, York seems to be the county that we are most compared to, whether we are demographically like them or not, which.
And, and that's part of, like, the, even the English learner population is a little bit different. They may have more Level Threes and Level Twos.
Right.
Where we may have a higher population of Level Ones and Twos. However, when our students that acquire English, the likelihood of them passing the SOL, and the data indicates it here, that they're very successful. As we'll share data in the future with graduation, you'll see again more of us talking about this population, how successful we are with our English learner population, as well as some other subgroups that we're doing, reporter groups that are doing extremely well, and that's with our SAT subgroup rates with meaning benchmarks. Also, our graduation data, that's going to be released in a few weeks, that we're starting to see the, really the ultimate goal is that while they're passing a test, we really want them to have, to be college career-ready, to have that diploma in hand, and to have a successful future. And so the, the data, as it kind of articulates, as we go through our K through 12, we're starting to see that evidence that hard work paying off.
I could just point out, York has 11.5% students with disabilities. We have 15.4%. You can probably see this as well, economically disadvantaged, York has 22.5%. We have 35.7% economically disadvantaged students. We are not like York, and we're becoming more diverse. And interestingly, when you look at our comparisons, we've actually just about caught up with York in math this year for all students, which is very significant because we're much more diverse.
Ironically, though, they have an LCI almost half of ours, so mathematically in the state, they're responsible for paying less of their public education than we are, given their student population, it's just odd.
Other questions? Ms. Taylor, did you have?
Oh, thank you for putting this together for us. I know it's a lot for us to look through, but I'm glad that we're acknowledging both our successes and areas for growth, and it does take time to elevate beyond excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to item 7.3, the capital development committee's IP recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewen's going to present the recommendations of the committee. As you're aware of, committees formed every year, and they look at all of our previous information and several other pieces that Ms. Ewen will talk about tonight, and then they bring, first of all, recommendations to us, and then after consideration by the board, then I will bring my recommended capital improvement plan to you in about four weeks' time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Heron. As we begin the fiscal year '21 budget process, you will recall that several years ago, the process for determining the capital improvement budget was brought forward in the planning and approval process of the operating budget. This was done so that we would be able to provide our needs to our funding partners, allowing them adequate time to prepare their budgets and allocate the resources needed to fund the school division's projects. This evening, I will be presenting to you the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and provide a preliminary look at the needs and applicable costs for those needs of the school division. Administration will continue to evaluate and fine-tune the projects and alignment of the projects in preparation for presentation of the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan in November. Information presented represents that of a working document that will evolve until the school board's approval in December and possibly even until the final adoption in May. Included at your seat is a spreadsheet showing the CIP committee's recommended tenure plan for your reference. Any additions to the current adopted plan are either highlighted in green if they've been added in the first five years, fiscal year '21 through '25, or highlighted in yellow if they've been added in years six through 10, fiscal years '26 through '30. Amounts highlighted in orange have been updated. Capital Improvement Plan Development Committee consisted of several members from senior leadership, a principal from each level, as well as three community members. Process began this summer to ensure that there was adequate time prior to the operating budget development to focus on the capital improvement plan. The results from the meetings of the long-range master planning committee were also considered prior to the final meeting of the CIP committee. In our process and timeline, we have also built into the schedule time prior to the school board approval for the public to voice its opinion through two public hearings. This timeline also allows the school board time to review the recommendations prior to its approval in December. Principals were asked to submit requests for projects this summer, and operations was asked to provide information on division-wide projects and routine maintenance schedule as well. Committee then reviewed and evaluated the requests to determine whether projects met the criteria to go forward as a capital improvement project. Committee met on three separate occasions in August and September. Information provided to the committee included enrollment projections as compared to building capacities, project requests received from schools and departments, the current school board adopted capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2029, operations brought forward additional refurbishment cycles to be considered, and projects presented by the long-range master planning committee were also considered. In order to be included in the capital improvement plan, the estimated cost of a project must be greater than $50,000. Committee reviewed each project request received from schools and departments to determine if it should be included. The committee also reviewed the current plan to determine if a project should be moved to a different year. To ensure open communication, we plan to share the outcome of the decisions made with the cost center managers and the principals who have submitted project requests on behalf of their buildings and staff. As a point of reference and for information, our funding partners adopt a five-year capital improvement plan, but funds are appropriated on an annual basis. During the fiscal year '17 budget process, the school board began developing a 10-year plan, which enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five-year plan and gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year '21. We will concentrate on the changes for fiscal year '21 from the adopted fiscal year '25 year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current plan that may have arisen from need or changes in cost estimates. Estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include 10% for A&E, 5% for contingency, and an annual escalation rate of 3% per annum. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, say, for example, new state requirements or mandates or for safety reasons. CIP committee is recommending that the following refurbishment or replacement cycles be included in the CIP. Auditorium refurbishments would be done every 25 years, as well as gymnasiums. This is based on a building's estimated useful life being 50 years, so at the halfway point, auditoriums and gymnasiums would need updating and repairs. You will see these refurbishments starting to show up beginning in fiscal year '26 with the Matthew Waley Auditorium and the Berkeley Gymnasium. Generators are located at most of our schools, as well as the operations building. They power various items throughout the building when there is a power outage from just the head-end room only to the entire building. It is recommended that they be included in the CIP on a 20-year replacement cycle. You will see these replacements starting to show up beginning in fiscal year '26. Last year, the long-range master planning committee and the CIP committee carefully considered the options of either a new elementary school or expansions at elementary schools, and determined that it made more sense financially, as well as logistically, to build a 10th elementary school. The committees felt that expansions would be temporary fixes and that redistricting would still need to occur. In addition, not all schools have the capability of expansion, and we also already have three schools with over 700 students. Also, as the population and construction grows, it may become difficult to find available land on which to build a new school. Expansions can be future options if needed. Originally, the construction of an elementary school was placed in the CIP during the fiscal year '19 budget cycle in year 2028. Upon review of the original estimate obtained in 2017 for a projected cost in 2028, it was determined that it included anticipated land and site development costs, as well as escalation. Given the request for the school has been moved up, we obtained three new estimates this year, as well as factored in the average cost statewide, and have adjusted the amounts in the CIP to reflect this change. Previously, the new school was in the CIP for a total of $38.5 million, and we have reduced that to $29 million. The current adopted CIP plan has the elementary school in fiscal year '23 and '24, but the CIP committee is recommending that it be moved up to fiscal year '21 and '22. This recommendation is based on the projected enrollment, including pre-K, being at or above 99% for the foreseeable future. This chart represents the enrollment, the elementary enrollment from last year on September 30th, 2018, with the addition of our pre-K population, as we do not yet have our official enrollment for the current year. We will also get updated projections in October, November timeframe, once this year's enrollment report is finalized. The projection numbers shown are from October 2018, with the pre-K capacity added at each of the five sites, Clarebird Baker, Laurel Lane, DJ Montague, Norwich, and Blaton. The blue areas indicate years and schools for which we are over 85% capacity, but less than 90% capacity. The yellow indicates years and schools for which we are over 90% capacity, but less than 100%. The red areas indicate years and schools where we are at or over 100% capacity. As you can see, we are currently utilizing approximately 98% of our capacity across all elementary schools, and are projected to be at essentially 100% in September 2020. And we remain between 99 and 100% capacity, starting with this September 2019. Committee recommends moving the elementary school design up to fiscal year '21 and construction in fiscal year '22 to alleviate capacity concerns sooner rather than later. In line with previous years where a project has been requested in the year-end spending plan that would qualify as a CIP project, the bus garage HVAC has been added into the. plan that would qualify as a CIP project, the bus garage HVAC has been added into the CIP in the next funding year, fiscal year '21, at an estimated cost of $265,000. This project is to add HVAC to the bus garage in order to alleviate the working conditions during the summer and the extreme heat. If funded in the year-end spending plan, this project would come out of the CIP. Recommendations brought forward from the long-range master planning committee to the CIP committee were turfing Cooley Field. The CIP committee supported this recommendation and has placed this project in the CIP in fiscal year '26 at an estimated cost of $1 million. The second recommendation was for middle school running tracks. The CIP committee also supported this recommendation and has placed this project in the CIP in fiscal year '26 for a total estimated cost of $477,600 for all four middle schools. I would like to note that this is not the competition tracks that are at the high schools, but a gravelled running path around the school for running clubs to utilize. Additions to the existing 10-year plan beyond the ones already mentioned include the following for fiscal year '25. paved playground space at Stonehouse Elementary. This project will provide adequate playground space for the number of students at an estimated cost of $103,000. School buses are typically included when a school is built through the CIP, so we have added a request for five buses at a cost of $620,000. Yes, ma'am. Additions to the existing plan in years '06 through '10 or fiscal year '26 through '30 include the following. Bus canopy at Clarebird Baker in fiscal year '26. Clarebird Baker is currently the only elementary school without a bus canopy. The committee felt that was, that this was an equity issue and should be added to the CIP. Clarebird Baker is also scheduled for HVAC replacement, roof replacement, and a refurbishment across fiscal years '28, '29, and '30. Based on the newly established generator replacement cycle, generator replacements have been added in fiscal year '26 for Towano, '27 for Matoka and War Hill, '29 for Lafayette, and in fiscal year '30 for Blatant and Hornsby. Based on the current refurbishment cycle, a refurbishment for Jamestown has been included in fiscal year '30. Also, based on the newly established auditorium refurbishment cycle, auditorium refurbishments have been added in fiscal year '26 for Matthew Waley and fiscal year '27 for Berkeley. Gym refurbishments have been included in fiscal year '26 for Berkeley, fiscal year '28 for Towano, and fiscal year '30 for James River. Widening of the main road entrance into DJ Montague to alleviate traffic backing up onto Centerville Road has been added in fiscal year '26. I would now like to review the modifications to the current existing plan. The first is related to the expansion at Jamestown High School. The original cost estimate for the expansion at Jamestown was for 12 additional classrooms and was obtained in 2017. We have obtained a more recent estimate as the expansion will now be for eight classrooms, which reduces the cost from $10.9 million to just over $9 million. Secondly, based on the projected middle school enrollment for the next 10 years being on average at 86% capacity and not yet reaching the 90% capacity overall where action needs to be taken, the committee is recommending that the design and construction of a new central office be moved to fiscal year '29 and '30, which will move Phase 2 of James Blair to fiscal '31 or later. This will be reevaluated each year as updated enrollment data is available. We provided a spreadsheet showing you the total budget by project and allocated by school. The next few slides will summarize by project type over fiscal years '21 through '25. The first area is for HVAC and window projects. This area accounts for 20% of the total five-year CIP or $16,362,094. Roof replacements, school refurbishments, and renovation projects account for 9% of the total five-year budget or $7,769,290. Projects grouped into the other category include items such as walk-in refrigerator, freezer replacements for cafeterias, generator replacements, electrical repairs, as well as division-wide projects such as parking, brickwork, and playground equipment. The total cost estimated over the next five years is $4,032,469, or 5%. The total cost for construction is estimated at $53,811,651, which is 66% of the five-year budget for capital improvements. This is a summary of the budget for our five-year plan, which totals $81,975,504. To highlight our major projects, fiscal year '21 contains the design for the new elementary school and the Lafayette expansion, as well as construction funds for the War Hill Auxiliary Gym. Fiscal year '22 contains construction of the expansion at War Hill and the new elementary school, as well as the design for Jamestown's expansion. Fiscal year '23, the construction of Jamestown's expansion and Lafayette's renovations are incorporated. Next steps in the process include a public hearing on October 15th, followed by the presentation of the superintendent's proposed CIP on November 12th, and the school board's prioritization of projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. I have a, I'm sure I'll have questions when I have a chance to, you know, or this, it's a lot, but just a process question. So, the long-range planning committee that informed the work of the CIP committee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me who was on, who's on the long-range planning committee? Like, is that, is that where the localities come in? Is that?
Yes, we have representation of both localities as well as our own staff and community members as well.
So, there's community members on both committees?
Correct.
And are they same community members?
Not sure. There's some overlap, yeah.
Generally broad input.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Young?
I'm looking at the, I mean, this always stuns me. For the elementary school design, which would be in fiscal year '21, we don't even have, the property, as far as I'm aware, has not been purchased. But we do have school designs. I mean, we do have school plans, so, I mean, maybe Mr. Kelly could answer that question, so, or somebody on staff. But so why is it necessary, if we already have school plans? We've got several elementary schools that are newer, and we have the plans for them. Why can't we use those plans? And so, wouldn't that cut down the cost for design? Or is that contingent upon the property? Trying to understand.
I think it's contingent upon the piece of land. It could be a two-story, it could be a one-story. I think any company going in to be the designer of a project would want to validate and, I guess, redo some of the work. Mr. Kelly might be able to help me a little bit on that one as well.
No pressure, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly.
So, when you're doing the designs like this, you generally use 10 to 12% of the total construction costs towards design. And that will depend upon the land, the work that has to be done to the land, the lands keeping that has to be done to the land, where the services are coming from, how transportation networks meld into the land and how, with your buses, how that's going to go. And any school design that we have, we would likely modify to some extent based upon today's criteria and such. So, if you remember when we built, maybe you don't, when we built Blatant and Hornsby, we were using a design that had, that had been used several times before, and we had a very small number of change orders. And that's because you've had a proven design that you're not starting from scratch, so. And I'm not sure what the design costs were for that school. That was prior to my getting on the, becoming a board member, but it's not, the numbers are not outside the realm of standard estimating, at this point, estimating criteria.
I think it's fair to say, Ms. Young, that, you know, we will consider all of the designs that are working very well right now and what we'd want of those in a new building.
Okay, I mean, because, and I do understand why, it's just, it just seems outlandish to me. I mean, maybe I'm naive that, that before you even built the school, you spent 10% of the budget on just the plan. It just...
And nobody wants to pay for the design, but they want to complain about the building.
I, and that's very true. I always like to complain. So, okay.
Don't you want to put in an amount that, you don't want to go over the amount, but certainly you can always go under, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so you want to put in something that you're pretty sure you're not going to go over, but depending on what the land is and what ends up happening, it could, it could be under that, based on your question, right?
We don't have to spend that much, actually. I mean, we might, but we might not.
Right, right, exactly.
And this is the estimate from three, these are three very recent estimates for a new elementary school, and they break down the percentage for design and the percentage for actual construction in the actual estimate. So, these, those figures are based on the three most recent estimates as well.
All I can say is we should have all been architects.
Be careful when you say that.
Or engineers.
Careful when you say that.
Additional questions?
The only thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the committee and the staff for putting all this together. And there's, there's a lot of work here, there's a lot of consideration that was put in, and I really appreciate all the, all the hard work that's done to do that. It's, I, it's, you know, when it comes out of the spreadsheets, it's easy, easy to take it, you know, how hard is that? But there's a lot of work that goes in, a lot of thought that goes into all this, and so, I appreciate Marcelus and his crew and your crew and, and all the community's members and folks who contributed on those committees, so I appreciate all that.
Mr. Kelly, additional?
If I could just ask for clarification, maybe this is directed to Dr. Heron, and for the broader community to have an understanding, when we talk about 85% and 90% and 100%, as a, a year ago, the school board met with our funding partners, the city and the county, and we identified trigger points, recognized in 85% was the time to start thinking about it, 90% we would actually do something. But, but, but why, why did we pick those points, 85% and 90%? And why is it that we don't want to have a school that's 100% full?
It leaves absolutely no flexibility in the school. For example, in Norge Elementary, specific example, we are pretty much full as a school, just about, and we are offering services and hallways behind curtains, therapy services and things like that. So, if you fill a building to its full, you've no room for any change or any flexibility. So, for example, if we're looking at teacher-to-student ratios, and I know that's a concern of the board and of all staff as well, and teachers, if we were to look at those ratios, we have no room to do anything with them right now. If we employ staff, we have no classrooms to put them in. So, if we take some of our high percentage free and reduced lunch schools and begin to look at ratios, it might be more appropriate for success in the classroom, we have no room for extra classrooms or to employ new teachers to bring down those class sizes. So, when you get above 90, your flexibility begins to go. And we are stable, you know, we have been stable so far in enrollment, but if that starts to grow before a school's built, then we're going to put extreme pressure on our staff in, at the school level in trying to cope with too many kids in a classroom.
What I'm hear you, what I hear you saying is that schools weren't really designed to be 100% full.
No, ma'am.
100% means that it, it hampers programmatic options within a building. So, they're not designed to be 100%.
I think the design capacity is 25 students per classroom, Mr. Snipes, correct? And that's what the original number of design capacity is built on, but in actual usage, we are very, we shouldn't have classrooms at 25 to one in kindergarten or in special ed. classrooms. We have classrooms of 10 students perhaps in some classrooms. So, programmatically, that generic figure doesn't work for the functioning of a school.
Thank you.
Well, and to quote Mr. Kelly, who often says, "And children don't come in nice packages of 25." So, did I get that right?
Yeah, that's pretty good.
So, yeah, um, thank you. That was a very important clarification, but I, but it reminded me to clarify another thing. This is not Dr. Heron's CIP recommendation to the board. So, if you want to talk a little bit about process and when that's coming, this, this is just a, a share.
As Ms. Ewing indicated, so Dr. Heron will bring her recommendations on November 12th?
Correct.
So, this is just the, the committee's recommendations, which are, we are hearing, and then they'll go back to Dr. Heron, and Dr. Heron will produce her official recommendations, which will be tweaked.
Is there any way that we can get a breakdown on fiscal year '23? The high school expansion and cafeteria construction for Jamestown High School? A breakdown between the cafeteria expansion and the eight-classroom expansion? So, you've got...
Mean, the cost for each?
Right, so you've got, for Jamestown, you've got two things going on, right? You've got the expansion of the cafeteria and you've got the expansion of the addition, is that correct?
Yes.
So, what I would like to see, and I'm sure maybe the design, maybe you have to, you know, combine that, but I would personally like to see a breakdown of what in the CIP of the cafeteria expense and then the eight-classroom expansion.
Do you have a...
I, I do have a, in $2,017, and Renee would have to...
I just think it would be, I think it would be helpful.
The dining room expansion, overall cost at $220 per square foot would be $1,536,260.
If we could just add, is it possible to add another line to break it out?
The question comes, is can you expand the building without expanding the cafeteria?
Dr. Heron would answer that question. I'm sure Dr. Laurel would like to also speak to that.
Well, I'd like to rephrase the question. Would staff recommend doing them any other way but together? I think is the question, right?
Yeah, sure. Mrs. Cook said.
We would probably recommend an expansion to the cafeteria today, based on the fact we're over 100%.
Right, and so...
So, so we need it actually today, even without it more classrooms.
Right.
So, you can, you, you could see it being separate?
It could come first.
Come first?
Because we need it today.
Right, but my fear on that would be, it looks like a shopping list that you could cut.
Right.
But if you, if that is something that, if, if it's nominal compared to the eight-classroom expansion, that's something you need today, and we do find opportunity to find, you know, a million extra bucks somewhere, can, is it something that would be possible to move forward, is all I'm saying?
We would have, we would need to also include design in that, and so that can, design usually takes six to months to a year, so...
We probably, I mean, we're going to have to get into the details of that. We have some estimates in the CIP, but to Mr. Kelly's point, we've made a decision, the board's made a decision to expand all three high schools. So, to expand and do all of the work at the same time would be most advantageous, because when you do a major project within a school, it's very disruptive, and so the more you can do at the one time would be better. Plus, you don't, we can't add the classrooms without it, so they tend to go together. So, there, yes, we could, but should we? Not sure.
We will await the superintendent's recommendation?
Yes.
Your interpretation.
Done.
What are you looking at me for?
Usually have extra questions.
No, I'm done. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Additional questions?
Reputation.
So, we have time to absorb this before the superintendent produces her recommendations. Okay, moving on to the policies, I guess, is this a batch of policies? It's a lot of policies.
These are all individual policies.
It's not a batch. It's not a batch. It looks like a batch, because it's a lot.
It is a lot.
But some are board and some are individual policies. So, we'll start with 8.1, school division legal status. A board policy?
It is, yes.
Foundations and basic commitments on the board.
Okay. I'll defer to the policy committee.
Um...
8.01, right?
I mean, it's self-explanatory, right? It's just the, our legal status and...
Explain it to us.
Were there substantive changes?
It's just bringing it in line with BSBA, with the verbiage, and lowercase...
B for board.
Other questions?
Anyone question our legal status?
Why are you looking at me?
Question a lot. I think we can move on to the next one. Okay, 8.2, higher policy, ABA, parental partnerships.
Um, so...
Bringing this one in line as well?
I think it's a retire, retirement, yep.
There is...
No V S B A.
No V S B A.
And it's, it's covered in other policies.
Says nothing.
Correct.
And all we did for the next one, the AC, is adding the cross-references, right? And 8.0...
That should have been batched.
I know. 8.04. Okay, this one was just adding, it was also kind of aligning a little bit with V S B A, because V S B A had that verbiage about what to happen if neither the chairman or the vice chairman is present, how, you know, who chairs the meeting?
On to 8.5, policy, I G B A, individualized education programs for students with disabilities. Ms. Bourgeois?
Dr. Burroughs was expected to be here this evening, but wasn't able to come at the last minute, so Ms. Bourgeois was very gladly stepping in in her place this evening. Thank you.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. The first policy that I'm going to review with you is I G B A, Individualized Education Programs for Students with Disabilities. This has been reviewed by our Special Education Advisory Committee. We've gotten no feedback regarding the recommended changes. As you can see, we redlined the old one, and it was just simplest to do that because of the number of changes, and have mirrored it to the V S B A. This is a very general policy. If you look at the end of it and the legal references, you'll see why it's a very general policy. We have a lot of state and federal requirements that, that guide our work in this area. So this really just gives you an overview of what we do for planning programming for students with disabilities.
Questions, comments?
Can I ask a question? I'm, I mean, can we go back to AC when we're through with this one?
Yes, we can go back. Yeah, do you have questions about this one?
No, I don't have any questions about this one.
Let's do this one first, then.
Okay. Okay. Are there questions? Any additional questions about the I E P? Is it okay if we go back?
Sure.
AC, 8.3?
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that we have to go back, because I was slow. But one of the things that we're constantly talking about is diversity. But one of the things that we're seeing in today's age, that there's, we don't allow for diversity of ideas and opinions, and that is not stated in here. And I think if we're going to have a non-discrimination policy, we need to emphasize the fact that we are also for the diversity of ideas. And that, that is protected by law under the First Amendment, but that is not stated in this in any way, shape, or form. And I'd like that added and maybe have the lawyer take a look at that, because I think that's an important addition. Maybe nobody else on the board thinks it's important, but I'm just thinking about the current climate and how, is the word, acerbic it is, that I would like our school division to be in the forefront of making sure that, that students that have, and teachers that have diversity of opinion with what is being out there is they're protected, that we will not tolerate discrimination against them.
Yeah, so I'm not opposed to, you know, kicking it back to the attorney, but I think if you read this policy, the only thing where there's choice involved is marital status. And so everything else is, is a characteristic that, that is not, you know, so, so, but we, we do speak a lot, in fact, there's a webinar about the First Amendment and school boards, what they need to know coming up soon. And so I think that, you know, it's partially covered through our, you know, our policies that address harassment and our lack of tolerance, that we won't tolerate harassment, and then also through the First Amendment itself. So I'm not sure it belongs here, but I, I agree with your, with your intent completely, and I think everyone around the table probably does.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be covered in other policy.
Yeah.
And I understand that. I do know that in this, in the, like, for the Code of Conduct, it has things in there, but I don't think it's enough. I think it needs to be added somewhere, as I am very concerned about students and, who may not flow with the flow and have different ideas and, and the possible, possible persecution and harassment they are receiving. So I'm...
If I could ask Ms. Bourgeois, do you feel like something like that is, is covered in our harassment, harassment policies or...
We do have a student harassment policy. It's, that's written based on identified classes, protected classes, and that's through the lawyer input.
I'm struggling to find the words that you'd put in there to, to cover things you want to cover and not cover things you don't want to cover. But, but maybe we should just go look and look at our policies and just see what, what, if there's some guidance in there.
Could we ask, could we make it a school board, you know, could it be something that the clerk talks to the attorney about and answers where that is covered? Thank you. Is that okay?
Yes, because I think that there's going to need eventually be a protected class for people that don't agree with each other, because we're getting, I'm sorry, I, I mean, it's terrible. And I, and I, I mean, it's wonderful when people respect, but when we're talking about tolerance and there isn't any, I think then we need to be sure that our students and staff are protected. And I feel strongly about it, because I don't like it when I find out that somebody is being harassed because they don't agree with something that was said. And, and then they're, then they're harassed at school. It's not right. So, I mean, I could go into some specific incidents, but this would not be appropriate for right now. But I would do think we need to think seriously about allowing for, I mean, we are allowing for, committed to non-discrimination with regard to sex, gender, race, color, national origin, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that applies to diversity of opinion also.
If I may just ask, Ms. Young, the language we'd want to check through the attorney and cross-reference in our other policies would be diversity of opinion? Is that, is that the language?
That's what I'm, diversity of opinion and ideas. But, I mean, the other thing you could do on here is protected by law, including the First Amendment. You could just add something to that, to, to that, so that it would establish that we are for, I mean, to me, the whole idea of school is for freedom of thought. I mean, that's why you have your kids go to school, is so that there will be freedom of thought and ideas, and that they'll be confronted with things they may or may not agree with. And, and then they will have respect and tolerance for those individuals who may or may not agree with them. And I'm not sure that that is covering that. So, and it's, it's important. I mean, it's foundational to our country. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. The clerk will look into that and...
Thank you.
Report back to us. Now on policy J F C E?
It's gang activity or association. Again, this is a policy that it was time to review and look at updates. We have added, made a few changes to align it with the V S B A. We clearly identified what the definition of a gang is, that it is related to our policy J F C, which is our rules and their consequences. At the bottom, lines 37 through 43, we actually met with our, in City County Police Representative, and reviewed all of that to make sure that what we were saying as far as training and updates could be supported, since that's the purveyor of the information for us. So we've had input on that section also.
Are there questions?
So the, the definition of a gang, are those ands? Is all four of those bullets required for the definition of a gang?
Includes, so...
I don't read it that way.
I'm not sure if it should be, I'm not sure if it should or shouldn't be.
Word may in there?
I, I'm just, I'm just, I was looking for clarity on the words. Is it and? All four of those are, are...
Based on our Code of Conduct, it would be or.
Ours.
Be any of them.
So three or more people who commit an illegal act are a gang?
Technically.
I just want to make sure we're not looking at it too overly broad of a definition of a gang, where the softball team is considered to be a gang, because there's more than three of them. No, I went, I, I...
Hopefully your softball team isn't committing an illegal act, Mr. Kelly.
Because I went to, I went to, I went to a seminar or whatever, and, you know, the softball team, they all wear certain colors, they all go more than threes, they all congregate together, and...
But they don't solicit haze or initiate others for membership. Well, they might.
They might.
They might, you're right.
So, so...
But they're not creating an atmosphere of fear and intimidation or disrupting the school environment, or anticipating in activities that threaten the safety of persons, or committing illegal acts.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just trying, trying to make sure that we, we're not being overly broad in what we consider to be a gang. But, you know, that's just me.
But the policy's about gang activity, right? So...
Right.
Start getting into the activities.
Right.
But like, I, I read that as a soccer, a soccer team or whatever wouldn't be that, because a gang is defined as a group of three or more people whose purpose is doing one of those four things.
Softball team's purpose is to play softball.
Your team vandalizes a field, was that a gang activity?
Purpose is to play soccer.
Committed an illegal act.
Would then, uh, result in conflict.
Next policy.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. 8.7 revised policy, J H C L G B.
Correct. This is a joint student and personnel policy regarding lactation support. It's the time, it's its first review. There are only minor changes. The Code of Virginia is referenced in legal references, so there is no reason to include it in the body of the policy.
So, yeah, so as the least qualified person at this table to talk about this, so, so what the words that are here are minimal required by code. So as a school board policy, should we say that in the lactation support, there should be a power outlet, a chair and a table? This is a school board policy versus just minimum required by code? Once again, the least qualified person at the table.
As, when the lactation rooms were initially identified, those were all established as expectations.
Right. So, and, and where this hits home for me is at my day job, that's what we provide. And so I just want to, as a policy by this school board, shouldn't we set the policy that if we, these are the things that are required? I had ands on all that, by the way. So I just, I just think that we should, you know, we should have a, ensure that these areas have a power outlet, a chair and a table. I'm done.
Is that something we'd want to put in a, in a regulation or a best practice behind the actual broad, bigger policy?
Well, our policy only requires that it's not a restroom shielded from the public. But as a policy, should we, should we say, this is what we think is required, and then go from there?
And, and I agree with that, for, for the simple reason that having been in that position, I would certainly have been appreciated to place that would have been, provided those AC elements.
It all, they all, the lactation rooms that are set aside have chairs?
I have not visited every lactation room, but that was the expectation that was established. We certainly can verify that.
And, and even if it's, even if it's not, if we can just say if possible, but just as a policy of the board, that's what we expect. So when you go to, when you go to build another building, the policy of the board is that this is what you're going to provide when you, when you provide that area.
If you're going to go to the attorney with that, um, and I would love that sentence to end, "To feed her child," period. We talked about that in, in, in our policy committee, but it's in the code that says until the child reaches the age of one. But if the attorney lets us strike that, because I just don't think we should, I mean, I just think, period, you know?
I mean, that's, that's from the code. If you all don't want to include that, that would be...
Well, if, only if you're, I mean, I wasn't going to get it if, but since Mr. Kelly has added the table and the outlet and the chair...
So, yeah, so we're going beyond code. So we can say, we're not, we're not, to feed her child, we're not restricting it to under the age of one. You're, you're looking at more towards the age of two.
Or whatever the mother chooses, I...
Correct, right, right, right.
I mean, I'm, so, but we would have to run your suggestion by the attorney. So I'm saying, since we're doing that, can you ask that question too? Because I don't like that language at all.
Okay.
We'll take it back. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to 8.8, policy K K A, service animals in public schools. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly? No, I, I have, I just remember when we added the miniature horses.
Miniature horses, that was a big...
Waiting for it to come up.
Yep, miniature horses.
And ferrets.
We did that back in 2012, and I, I was like, what? It's a...
So that is when the policy was first adopted, was in 2012. And so it is up before you for revision. Most of the changes you see were just to clarify some of the wording regarding things like tethers and harnesses. The miniature horses are still in there.
Yeah, so we, we had, we had a discussion of that in 2012, and we'll probably have a discussion of that in 2027, when they do it again. But...
You have comments on it tonight?
I do not have any comments on it tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any additional comments?
We have 8% power left on my notice.
Ms. Young?
In difference to the, the amount of power that ours, isn't it? But it says a service animal means a dog, but it can be other animals, right?
A miniature horse.
It can be a miniature horse.
No, but, I mean, I understand it, can, but can it be a pot-bellied pig? I mean, I'm just asking, can it be other things?
Yeah, it, starting at line 10, it talks about other species of animals that are not, and, but it does talk about other examples that can be. But it's primarily like miniature horses.
I'm done. That's her part is...
But it is important to distinguish service animals versus, what was it?
Comfort animals.
Current animal.
Current comfort. And we are saying that this is talking about service, so you're not going to have someone coming in saying their peacock is making their comfortable and they need a peacock.
Correct.
Are we good? Moving on to 8.9 revised policy, J J A C, student athlete concussion activities. Back to us?
Yes.
Mr. Paula?
Mr. Paula?
Okay, as presented, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. I'm bringing back policy J J A C, student athlete concussions for your consideration. As presented last month, per Code of Virginia, we are required to update this policy every two years. Changes in the policy reflect the changes in the V S B A policy, and it has been reviewed and approved by council. Given the feedback from last month, since we last presented the policy, we have clarified that a student athlete who has been removed from play, evaluated and suspected to have sustained a concussion, shall not return to play that same day, lines 76 through 78. There's further explanation in Section 5, Return to Play Protocol, lines 96 to 103. Additionally, Dr. Worley is going to be meeting with the athletic directors tomorrow, and will be reiterating both the policy and the procedures, and making sure that we communicate to parents that we strongly encourage them to report any concussion sustained outside of class.
Thank you, Mr. Paula. Questions? Comments?
No, I'm good.
I just ask a, a question. Ms. Cook mentioned earlier about there are several policies with very minor changes that could have been batched potentially. I want to ask, moving forward, if there are policies with really minor changes, is the board okay with us batching some of those as we bring them forward, even if they're not batched by, in the V S B A updates? Is that, with that, and then if there's one that needs further discussion, can be pulled out of the batch potentially?
Well, if, so if part of the batching is if it comes through V S B A and we've reviewed it within the last five years, so even if it's minor changes and we haven't reviewed it in several years, I think it warrants...
Separate.
Yeah, I do.
So it depends on age. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a factor, yeah.
Even if there's, what if there's no changes at all? Batch those?
Does everyone? I just think as a matter of best practice, this board should look individually at every policy every five or so years, you know? So I, I understand the desire to batch, but, and I'm all for, you know, grouping contracts and batching when possible, but it's part, it's one of our major responsibilities. So if it's six years old or more, I think we should look at it.
So we, I, I would agree with that, but if there are no changes to it, goes through the policy committee, goes through us, no changes, we're done. I don't think we need to vote on it. Right?
Goes in the consent agenda, then...
But you have many changes to it all. It's, all it needs to say is reviewed 2019.
It does us no harm to put it in the consent agenda, except for the chair who has to read it.
I don't care.
And then it has, and then it looks like there's a trail that we looked at it, and it's not, it's not a policy that's been out there for 25 years and never looked at.
There's a trail that you, that you just put at the bottom of it, says reviewed, all these, all these policies have at the bottom of them when they were reviewed, and if you, and if you have, if you didn't make any changes to it, there's nothing to vote on, because you haven't changed anything. But I'm just parlaying.
Thank, thank you for your guidance. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, action items. Is there a motion to approve item 9.1 personnel?
Madam Chair, I move, we approve personnel actions as presented by the superintendent in closed session.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does that include the, the revision that was made?
Correct, which is why I said it that way, yes.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Zombie.
Hi.
On to item 9.2, motion to approve school bus purchase.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the purchase of two special needs school buses in the amount of $219,578 from Sunny Merry Men Incorporated.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Very none, Ms.?
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Taylor.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Ms. Zombie.
Hi.
Item 9.3, release from compulsory attendance, number R 20-04.
Madam Chair, I move to approve released student from compulsory attendance in case number R 20-04.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Taylor.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Zombie.
Hi.
Okay, moving on to item 10.1, board member comments. I'll begin with Ms. Taylor.
I hope everyone else is healthy. That's all.
I would like to ditto that. Welcome back to school.
Ms. Young?
Yes, I want to thank the staff for all of their hard work. We kept us busy tonight, and thank you for all your hard work. I also want to announce that tomorrow night at Jamestown High School, Colin Karchner is speaking. He is a TED Talk personality, and he's going to be talking about internet safety and technology and how it affects our children, and including bullying, which I think is a, a big part of what happens on the internet and those devices today. That starts at 6 o'clock. It's from 6 to 8 tomorrow night, October 2nd, at Jamestown High School. I plan on attending.
And, Ms. Young, do folks have to RSVP for that?
No, you can just show up, and it's, you don't have to pay. But if you're a parent and you have teenagers or middle schoolers, especially apropos, and from what I understand, you can bring those kids also. So...
Kelly?
Uh, nothing, Madam Chair.
I would just like to say October 29th is band night, so all of our bands are starting to compete, and so folks can come to Warner Stadium and watch all three high schools, and historically, we've had some middle school representation as well, but it's a way to support our bands and watch their show in, in full, not just at a halftime. Moving on to upcoming events. Assembly committee meets October 9th at 8 o'clock here in the annex. Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting the next day on the 10th, 6:30 PM at the rec center. And then public hearing on the capital improvement plan is October 15th, 6:30 at Striker, followed by the regular meeting. Closed session is on November 12th here in the annex at 6:00 PM, followed by work session at 6:30. So, next, sorry, looking at our agenda. Dr. Heron, will there be a school spotlight on the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
There will be. So we have a school spotlight. We'll have many policies to approve, many, and then we'll have an opportunity to appoint citizens to our advisory committees. And we'll have an opportunity to discuss the CIP. So unless there are additional comments or feedback, this meeting is adjourned.